42.
All right, I will call us to order at 6:05 and I'll call to order this work session of the town of Oakland. Defense with the pledge and invitation till we go to the regular meeting. We'll ask for roll call.
Commissioner McMullin.
Present.
Commissioner Remus.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
And Commissioner Pollan and Mayor Sturt are not here, but we have a call.
Very good. All right. The thing we have on here that's near and dear to our hearts is the multiple housing development discussion. And Jay, you're going to lead this.
Yes, I am. We do have Tara Salmieri, who many of you know and remember from back in the, in the day. The day before today, shall we say.
The day.
Back in 2014, when, and we'll talk a little bit about that too. So if we could just get that rolling to the. There we go. Okay, so. It's on and I'm going to try to get it forward. But. That works.
That is how you wrapped up.
It's all done pretty much. Kind of get the idea. There goes, okay, so way back in 2018, you don't have the first moratorium. Remember that? I think that was. Well, it was after the rezoning to the. What was then known as Open Preserve, which became avenues back in those days, if you will. And. So during that time period, we did recognize because at Open Preserve, i.e. the avenues. And the avenues, we also had Old Island and we realized that we couldn't apply these gateway corridor guidelines. So we'll talk about that a little bit as we go and we did come back and naturally Mike Morrissey helped us and we put it together, the design guidelines. And now we have a temporary auditorium that was established this year on, in February. And so through August, if you need to, we can, we can. Lengthen it if necessary. So the results of this year intent is to make sure that we have the, the right standards and tools moving forward. Looking at your policies, just looking at the whole realm of, of plans and, and what might need to be changed or modified in, in, in the future. So we've involved the planning and zoning board as well as the appearance review board. And they've actually come up, come up with some things, some ideas. And, and we've been reviewing the land development code and Tara's been very helpful with that. And, you know, but one of the things that we kind of go back to is this character question. I know that certain people use the word Mayberry and so it's rural and, and we've really been, you and you have been, I should say. Pretty on to that idea of keeping whatever, whatever it is that you got to keep it, whatever it is, the character is. And, and you do have certain documents that you have to look at, the top plan, the, the opportunity guide. The mobility management master plan and the zoning code as well as that, that last little piece that. That we've had on the complete street design. So the comprehensive plan is related to multiple family development. At that mixed use activity center designation. That allows up to 25 dwelling units per acre. And that was recently amended downward, shall we say. And you can see, if you can see, these three spots, the. Avenue's, the Pearson property and the. Saint John or Johns Lake property, I'll call it. Those are the sites that are available now for multiple family development. And that's going to be important as we, we talk a little bit more. Here is the opportunity brochure and how many of you remember that? And you know, you, you did, I know you did because there was a lot of discussion and people in both meetings remembered that. It was being a very positive time to look at what was going to happen and, and look at the different. Moving on here somewhere. Help me. Move on, please.
Operator, Aaron.
So you see those opportunity sites and, and those were clearly outlined as being. Places where you would have more intensive development and things looked a little bit different way back then than they do today. As, as they do, and that's why you really have the function of planning to, to go over things and, and, and to keep on refining your policies. But you can see that it's pretty much the, the state road 50 corridor where things are going to happen. And are the big opportunities, if you will. And, and there were some strengths and, and some shortfalls. It was strong in that you focused on the commercial properties, you developed that overlay and certain landscape standards as well as design standards. And it, it didn't really look too much at. Mixed use development. And single family design or things of that nature. So there's just an example of one of the multiple family projects. Not exactly sure where this is, but it just gives you a taste and.
That's not here, right?
That's not here, that's not the guy you know of. And I'll try to move forward. Yeah, we go. Thank you. The, you know, there's different types of obviously a multiple family. This is a little more intensive, but that was. Put in the mix as commercial mixed use meeting. So you've really thought a lot about different, different aspects and, and you know, it's, I'm not moving forward here. Thank you. But you, you do have some, some challenges even, even now. That, you know, we have this, this plan development and it's kind of a. Well, that, I guess that was really where we didn't have the design for all these things. And it was kind of of an approval by special zoning plan unit development. And that's kind of a negotiated thing, you may or may not include the things that you need, but. Then. We got to the design districts and, and that's where we really got into the details of how to design a building. Much less multiple family housing. And we had good participation there. You can see that there were quite a few meetings and. We came up with some principles for these design districts and moving on. And I've gone to all those details there, but thank you. You can kind of see it there, there are five design districts. It looks a lot like the comprehensive plan, it looks too different. You've got your commercial quarter, you've got, you know, a town center and kind of a neighborhood center and. There's site planning and building design for each one of those colors, so to speak. And that's where you have your going forward. You have your urban quarter, which is kind of where we're focusing at this point. And it looks a lot like commercial zoning with 50. And, and here it's, it's important to see that you have prototypes for every type of development. Especially on the right there, it's leaving, there's a, there's a type of apartment building. That's just a plain Jane so-called apartment building. So, you know, that was put in, in 2018 and. Then after that, we, we actually got an apartment building that had nothing to do with the design guidelines. Cause it was all approved prior to the design guidelines. And so this created a lot of discussion, shall we say, in town. And, and that's what I want you to feel free to jump in on about discussion. But it could have been a lot worse. We were able to save the trees on the street out there and we did a lot of things that Mike helped us with the building design. You know, they wanted to build a whole wall of apartments and the rec center so-called. It's just going to be a wall of buildings. We got to break it up, so that's what you see out there now. And so it's much, much better. Unfortunately, there was a couple of trees that had to come down with the, with the. With the lightning actually, but not dwell too much on that. Moving forward, we've got into the mobility master plan. And that was a little bit of simplicity in, in, I feel somewhat of a genius way moving forward. I mean, we looked at all of the, these. And I'm just skimming, really skimming through this very lightly, but there were, there's a lot of background information. That went into this plan, looking at the corridors, looking at the land uses, looking at the plan developments. And, you know, incorporating the opportunity brochure policies. And then, and then we came out right here with. Expanding the grid, the traditional grid of the town. Because this is really what you want is livable, sustainable blocks. So that as opposed to big strip shopping centers that kind of float off into the wild blue yonder. We know that redevelopment is going to take place over years and it's going to, it's going to change these buildings. They're going to change uses over time. It may not seem like it now, but they are and they will. And you can see that over time in places that have been in business so-called much longer than, than Oakland in terms of commercial type industrial. And we even put in the dirt streets. Not that you want to start building a bunch of dirt streets maybe, but at least you got them, you like them, people. They're crazy about their dirty streets. Those are probably not the people who are using the car wash down the street, but nonetheless. It's got a pretty good vision of your streets and in a general sense. And then as we move along, there's your dirt. And even a place where you can have a. A transportation hub, that circular area there. Moving a little bit forward, they tried to think a little bit about the intersections that are so important, realizing. And that's when we got into the complete streets, which doesn't necessarily have anything to do with multiple family. But it certainly has something to do with your character. Is there, is there a thought there?
Oh no, I'm just thinking.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
Say something, so.
We had smoke coming out the top of you.
Right.
So after all this discussion and probably a little more detail on the. Presentation, but talking to the planning and zoning board and the appearance review board. They did make some, and I won't say it was a voting kind of a thing, but I think there was a pretty good consensus when it discussed. After even the mission, talking to them, there is a room for multiple family housing. It's a good thing to have a diverse housing. Housing stock and. There's been 25% rental housing in this town forever, basically, since, you know, the early 2000s. So it's something you have, you might not see low rental housing, but it is there. Pretty significant. And, and who hasn't been in an apartment? I mean, I know I live.
I think we all have, I don't think that's. Oh, the need for them, I think our question more is the need of how many we need.
Bingo.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's, that's good to know right there. And we have had a, an economic study, an analysis that does. Make some kind of predictions for what you can hold and probably another state telling me here was about 300 some odd units over four, three or four years.
Well, they, they basically, when we did the economic study, it's about been on three years now. The absorption rate for the town based off of the demand that was out there was about 60, 60 units a year. You know, over a period of time. And so the idea was that 342 units would take up a lot of that absorption with the, the avenue. But we're three years in, I believe the demand's grown since we had that economic study. So the 340, and even if we brought another project in today, it would be two to three years before you'd have, even have it start leasing. So by the time you bring another project on, we will pretty much met that absorption rate of the current project. So just, just kind of put that in.
Yeah, and, and there is some good economic analysis on apartments that's included in there that the apartment folks gave us. That kind of gives an idea. I, I don't think it's skewed towards them, but I can tell you just sitting, or I sit every day, every single week. There's people looking for apartment sites and they're, they're hashing over the apartment sites that you already know of. They're shown there. They're, they're just. The interest is high. So it's something to think about. Another thing that the planning and zoning board, I think, came to consensus on, I don't know how strong it was, but it was definitely. Let's put the apartments not over here across the street on fourth, but over yonder, over your neighborhood. Your site of, of the turnpike, so to speak. That's what they said. And interestingly enough, and I want to point this out, if you recall, those three sites that we saw on the other side, Pearson, Johns Lake, the.
That's the bin Laden.
Bin Laden, yes, the bin Laden too. Okay, who's the. Who's the. That's regardless, regardless, that's where you have it. You don't actually have it on this side because if you recall, the site across the street, so to speak, on fourth, that was a. What staff thought was a compliant type of. Design area. But they needed a compliance amendment. They don't have the mixed use activity center, all they've got is mixed use commercial. So, well, you're going to have to ask over this, that's a policy question that I believe you can hang your hat on if you want. It's, it's up to you. But I think that's just about. And there's some other things there going forward, 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 forward. If you. You know, you can see there's some things that we would like to make sure, you know, a lot of, I hate slides like this because it's not fair anybody looking. But, but the point is, is that kind of drilling into the code and trying to make some guidelines that are. Maybe some are adopted, maybe some are not, but more like, like the forms to comply when you come in for a project. To make sure that the block lengths and all these things are done, that they're. A little more detailed than we have right now. And, and to clarify the relationship of design guidelines and the plan development zoning classification. Also adding some of the design manual doesn't really have much on it, in multiple family. So. I think there's a question of moving forward. What is your, your take, your reaction? Wanted to give you as much time as, as you need.
I'm, we're done with.
Yeah, well, I know, we can, you know, you can just, yeah, go ahead.
Here, and I'll say this and then I will open it up to us and then I'll, I'll give my comments later, the things that we have to, to look at. And you said it in the beginning and I am probably, probably one of the biggest supporters of this being Mayberry. Rather than what we would call mouth pilot, where they all go, where it's all the traffic and stuff. In 2013, we had that first charrette and did all this. We're not geniuses, none of us. We had no idea what was coming. I, or I'm going to tell you, I had no idea what was coming, or to the extent of what was coming. So the product that we got from that charrette compared to where we are today are two completely different landscapes. And we need to, our big question, the five of us at this table, the three of us, you know, and Kathy and Rick. Or what do we want to look like? Do we want to stay Mayberry or do we want to move along? Because we really do have that choice here for the most part and we are rapidly losing, in my mind, Mayberry. We need to probably have some more of those type of charrettes with the. The public coming in. We know what a lot of the comments are, but we always hear the bad comments. We don't hear the positive comments until we start getting everybody together again. I know how hard that is because here's a workshop and here we are being the only ones here, which is really disappointing too. But what we want to look at is we want to look at stuff like studies versus wants. I, I'm not sure I really care what a study says that we can support. I know what, what I want for a vision for the town. So economical analysis is, and studies and reports that say you can do this and you can bear this. They really don't mean anything to me. You know, and like I said, I'm just making the point so that we have a, a starting point to talk about. That's the stuff we need to look at. We need to look at, you know, talked about that the interests are high. For example, have apartments are here. The other side of it says interests are pretty high from the people that are already here and not have apartments here. So again, statistics don't really tell the tale of where we want to move. Started to say Mayberry and Oakland, we need to do that. And then that, and then we talked about, or you talked about where we would want them and the looks. At this point of saturation, I don't know if it's about where they are as compared to the looks of the entire town. With what a stacked level of living mix. If we have to have. If we have to have building, we have to have building and I get that, it's the wall, we can't stop people from building. But we might be able to stop stacking one on top of the other to make just, you know, million people come here. And that goes in, in events and things that we have and how many people we have here. All those things that we do are wonderful, they're not our little town things anymore. And that's where we need to start looking. So those are my comments to get us started. So I'll turn the table over to.
Senior. You guys got senior, so.
No, so I, I, there's a way to do it in a, I mean, you know, you go around the country, you see these urban centers or these mixed use centers are being created and built up. So I just think we just need a better visual of what it would look like and where we will put it. Cause there, I mean, I, I was just in a place just Sunday, Duluth, Georgia, small little town, but they got a nice little retail area. They got some apartments across the railroad track. They have a small little, you know, retail area mixed use. So it can be done and still keep that small town feel. Cause I would tell you, I felt like I was right in Oakland in Duluth, Georgia, which was just north of Atlanta, Georgia. So I think it is, we, you know, we need to do another charrette again and you got Mark on staff to help and guide us and make sure we can play, place it in a, in a nice way. I know we talked about not having anything too high, just like Maitland is, because it just kind of makes you feel small and it's not something we want. So I just think we need to, you know, continue to have these workshops. You know, have a better visual of what it will look like. And I believe we can bring in that Rick, that mixed retail with some small, you know, you know, living experience, living facilities alone with retail. I think it'd be done, you know. Let's try to get a visual and then, you know, I think we can meet the, the demands of everyone, still keep that small town feel. And have the retail that we would like along with some multiple limited spaces. But nothing that's going to be too overwhelming to make us feel like we're losing that character.
You should, yeah. You mentioned numbers of units is, is important.
Yeah.
So maybe 342 is too many in one place.
Oh, definitely, definitely in one place, yeah. But you know, when you were look at the, you know, the total of, you know, what's, you know, you know, what's coming our way. You know, we have all these housing developments coming our way. That's going to impact traffic and, and you know, if we look at traffic, we talked about that before. It's not, sometimes it's not how far you got to go, sometimes it's how long it's going to take you to get there. And that's why some of the traffic, you know, professionals are looking at. And I could tell you, it takes me 30 minutes, I mean, round trip to, to get to, to Winter Garden. You know, on, on, in the middle of the day, you know, and that's crazy. You're talking about three and a half miles away. And so we add too much and, you know, really, you know, impacting us. And so if you put some type of multi-family over there in Remington, I mean, I don't even know how you, we even get to it. Cause there's only one way to get to it over there by 7-Eleven unless, you know, you, I'm not sure we, you know, with the possibility where we'll go. But we just got to do it in a smart way and still, and not, like I said, I don't want to be repetitive because I know the mayor's not here. I still, I still think we can do it in a smart way, still keep that small town feel.
I, I, I do find that the people who are talking to me, they're not talking about big complexes, they're talking about smaller. Even, even the folks that asked, the request that they were in, in the, in the low 200s, which is not a big apartment complex. But it's, and, and I shouldn't say they're all just crawling all over us for apartments or even, and they're, they're actually now starting to talk condos. But it's just the housing market is so strong here, period, that, that people are just looking for, you know, the next piece of dirt. It's not just multiple family.
Oh, I think it's that way all across.
It's all across, yeah.
You know, it's that, it's us. And again, that's our big question is what do we want to look like? You know, and how fast we need to get there, so.
I believe that, in my opinion, I like to stay Mayberry, look like Mayberry. As much as we can possibly do it. Now, I know that most of the citizens are the ones who are going to help us hone in on exactly what we want. Cause it's, they're the ones who live here, all of us. But a Mayberry is something we can accomplish and still have all that. So if someone comes to our town and asks me for an apartment, it needs to look like a Mayberry apartment. He asked me for a gas station, it needs to be like a very very gas station, which we accomplished nine years later in race track. If you come to an office, maybe everything has to have a Mayberry equals this, no matter what you bring. So there's a way to say you want an apartment, it has to look like Mayberry and feel like Mayberry. And there's a way to do it. And we got cut off guard with avenues, right? Now we're feeling all the repercussions of it right now because of what the result happened over there. But we could have forced the Mayberry on there and not let the developer say, this is the only way to make money is by putting a five-story building with elevators. Cause right now, all around the state, there's a lot of town home apartments that look like Mayberry. They are very sought after, A, because of COVID, we have that going with us as if anything happened, COVID and the lockdown. Helped the rest of the world realize that they don't need a tower with 500 residents in it. They, so we can do a Mayberry looking apartment complex, that's two-story town home looking and when people drive by, it looks like it. We also are citizens, want restaurants. I don't know if you guys get that all the time, but I get it a lot. I, I have time on my winter.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I spend a lot of time at Winter Garden.
Like why?
Cause I like Winter Garden, but because that's where the, the pub and the restaurant and everything that is for me. Because I like Winter Garden, but because that's where the the pub and the restaurant and everything that is for me to do is there. So when I run into our constituents in Winter Garden, who are also from Oakland, they say, don't you wish, Commissioner, we had that over there in Oakland? Yes, I do wish we had that in Oakland, but it's not going to happen unless we have a balance. So that the developer is the one who actually invests in it. We have a school because Oakland decided to invest in a school. We own it. I would love to own every single pub, restaurant here, so we don't have to ask nobody permission. But it'd be a lot of overhead for, it'd be a lot of overhead for us to run it. So we can push the Mayberry to anybody who walks into our town, no matter what category it is. Traffic is inevitable. It's it's going to come from Lake County no matter what. We could stop everything right now and put a moratorium on everything going vertical in the town of Oakland for the next 25 years, and that traffic is going to keep on coming because Lake County is deciding, and because Winter Garden is deciding. We're stuck in the crossfire. So unless we reroute Colonial and make it go towards Horizon West, we're going to have that coming through. We're not a dead end. We're a pass-through. So as much as we try to divert traffic, it's coming through us. Yet, we're not taking advantage, because we have traffic that's generated by someone else who's generating everything that that city or town needs for their police officers, for their fire department, for their town, for their taxes, for their restaurants. And we're just not getting the benefit of it. So having traffic is not something that's a study that worries me. But if if we stop doing what we do, it's it's going to get worse and worse and worse because of the 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 high demand of this area in the market. So if we can get a way to make sure, as long as it takes, as long as it takes. If someone comes with an offer of a hotel, it has to be Mayberry style, and we'll make you wait nine years. I got plenty of time to get this right. We have no space available to retry it. I'll say it over and over again. We can't get this wrong again, because we're running out of space. Winter Garden's got the luxury with 43,000 acres or, you know, to you know, do a mock run and try it. We don't. We have three pieces of good properties or four that is the only thing we have left.
Okay, I've I've got a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
So I I he hit on, Commissioner Ramos hit on a couple of them specifically, but I was going to talk a little bit about about traffic, you know, again, the the traffic's not going to stop. And if we're, you know, if the town's afraid of the traffic, Winter Garden and Claremont are going to fill the void for you, and and things will just stay the way they are out on Highway 50. So we've got to understand that that traffic's going to be there, and one of the things that could help the traffic is this transportation sales tax, and I was at the meeting today, and they're they're discussing that. But that's that's a discussion for a different day. But, you know, it it's important to kind of set that traffic aside and and really look at these projects now as far as, and we're talking about the Highway 50 corridor. You know, we're talking about that area that's supposed to be a little more intense. It's not supposed to be Oakland Avenue. It's supposed to be, you know, it's a six-lane road, and it's supposed to have a little more intensity on on the development. The the other big thing that that I look at is is I I think about what's the town going to look like 50 years from now? And if the majority of the development here, because I've heard people talk about single-family residences out on Highway 50, or townhomes out on Highway 50, things where their owner occupied. That sounds great, but 50 years from now, if the majority of the housing stock here in Oakland is owner-occupied, single-family residence that has, say, our homes and homestead exemptions and everything else, those properties don't grow in value. You know, if you look at somebody's taxable value versus their value, you know, sales value right now, people are getting a huge benefit, a tax benefit right now, if you've been in your house for more than three years. If you've got those exemptions. We've got to have that diversity of commercial, and the apartments are part of that diversity of commercial. They give you two things. They get you that that commercial, and they get you value. And they get you more heads in town in order to support the the retail. But if all you have is a single-family residential, majority of it, and you've got a little bit of commercial sprinkled in, then in 50 years, you're going to have a tough time maintaining the levels, or even 20 years, maintaining the levels of service that you want. You, the the town enjoys a police department, and you enjoy great fire service, great police service. All those things start to erode. You're either having to raise the millage or cut back on services, because your your revenues are pretty much capped because of all the exemptions. So you've got to find that balance of having that commercial in there so that you can continue to maintain the level of service that everybody enjoys here. Everybody really enjoys having a a good police department. So just just something to think about. I'm not, I'm not advocating.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but one of the good points to add to this and and ask our citizens, would you guys like to be at 10, 12, 15% tax base, and we'll keep it the way it is, and we'll have great service from the police department? Well, but not, not everybody can afford to be paying that much tax.
Right.
And that would be like paying, you know, Miami Beach taxes here, because we don't have a balance.
But from from the staff standpoint and moving forward, we need to have clear parameters if if we're willing to look at the possibility of having apartments, and we've got three pieces of property that set themselves up well. And I'm not saying all three of them have to have multifamily on it. But you got the Johns Lake Point, the former Bin Laden property, you've got the McPherson Trust property next to, you know, they're on the Turnpike across from the racetrack, and you've got the Four Street property. Those are the larger pieces. There are some smaller pieces. But those are the three main ones that people are going to be eyeing as far as multifamily. And the staff, we understand what the the look that we're looking for, but we're, what we're running into is the actual uses, when we get down to it. If somebody comes in with a multifamily and mixed use, one of the problems we've had is they want to build the multifamily, and they'll build the commercial later. But are we even entertaining, you know, multifamily? Is that something that we should even, you know, be entertaining? Right now, there are no entitlements for multifamily. You've got two mixed-use properties that could very easily have multifamily as part of them, but right now, there are no entitlements for multifamily. So nobody's entitled to come in and build 200 apartments. That's up to the the commission to to make that decision and and making those, you know, amending those those mixed-use developments. But we need to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish in order to to keep these things moving forward and try to get, you know, is it, is it 180-unit project with commercial on the first floor? Or is it these other kind of units where it's two stories, and maybe they're in the back, and you got commercial on the front? Or is it no, no multifamily at all? Because otherwise, we're just kind of, you know, running in circles. That's part of the reason why I've got this moratorium, so we can kind of.
And that's the big part of the question that I posed us to begin with, is is what do we want to look at, what we want to look like? Because what we do is make your job impossible, because what we want as far as a look, you can't do.
Yes.
And and I get that. I think we all get that. You can't do so where.
We've got some very strong design districts. We've got some some things that we can certainly.
But we need to figure out for us, again, statistics out of the way, and I'm sorry, but how do we want it to be? If we want apartments here, okay, that's fine if we got a mix of apartments, but to, why do they have to be the atrocities that we have on Oakland Avenue? Why can't it be two-story?
That's what I, that's what I, yeah.
The the purpose of apartment, when you said we all lived in apartments, and I think Kathy and I both said this in the very beginning, the mayor, that if it wasn't for apartments in our opening days of Disney as original employees, we'd never be here today. But here's the difference between now and then. When you build apartments now, you might as well have it for people that can afford to buy houses, because they build them so big, they're way too expensive for the normal Joe to come in that needs to get started. And that's what we need to look at. If we want apartments for people, we want people that can really afford to be in apartments to get themselves started. That's what apartments are really designed, in my eyes, are designed for. There's a need for them. But we can't make them as expensive as what they got over there, or we're not going, we're spinning their own wheels on what we want to look like.
Well, and that that's another, a whole other caveat.
Yeah, it is.
The affordable side of it.
It is.
So can we, what's our boundaries? I'm glad the lawyer is right next. She can answer. What's our boundaries of what we can limit? Can we say we want to see an apartment every 10 years, and when these three properties are done, it's 30 years from now? A, two, can we limit the size? Or can we limit them to, if you put an apartment, you have to give me the whole thing, the whole master plan with the I might wish this has to be checked 10 boxes down. Allow you to put an apartment, or is that even an option?
I I have.
If we can get past that, the market is so hot, we could tell them what to put and how to make it look. Correct me if I'm wrong. If they come in here, we could tell them we want it to look just like this, no matter what, and if you don't like it, hit the road.
And racetrack proved that.
Correct.
And and you've you've gotten even stronger with that with these design districts.
Let let Hap go.
I think Marc, I think Marc should want to say something.
Couple of things that I think when everybody's saying is overall, there's a quality threshold that you don't want to go below. And there are tangible pieces that can set aside somebody coming in that wants to do a REIT, a real estate investment trust type of apartment complex. That's today's flavor of the month for development. And you can say, we're going to limit this to 200 units. That's going to put most of your thick-frame REIT-style developers that are going to turn this thing in about a three-year. And and that gets you that typical apartment project complex. And you are, you are isolating your market, okay, for developers, to more of a long-term hold developer. Somebody that's more almost generationally going to hold this project. By just that, you are defining the type of construction that they would do. The the fact that they are going to hold this, there means there's going to be an investment in the community that they want to, you know, looking at from a long-term maintenance standpoint too, so the quality of construction changes. There are a lot of things that change when you're not going to lose this thing in three years.
Exactly.
So there are some of those aspects that you can put into part of the the project or whether it's part of the zoning. I think that, what I'm hearing is strange, is that the level of quality is probably the number one you know, aspect.
Yes.
The number two effect in the sense of how do we get that quality with the creative-minded developers? And that's where you start to restrict some of the the, you know, more corporate people out, because they need larger projects to make that number one.
Right.
Those are two big things.
Minimizes the potential of investors, which we don't mind.
That's right, because you get to be more selective, because they, those investors. Okay, municipality, like the kind of, as a 50 to 100-year outlook, we talked about this in the past. A developer, where is their outlook? Long-term, short-term, a REIT development, although there's there's need for those. That that developer's looking at a three-year outlook. And a personal hold, you know, generational hold, family company that's doing apartments with mixed use and engaging the entire, you know, development, they might hold for 30 years. That's that's the goal, that creative-minded developers with the long-term outlooks that you have as the as the town progresses.
Can I jump off Mike?
Well, I just want to hear the answer. I want her to answer a question that I asked her about can we hold them every 10 years? One second. I'm going to ask, she needs to answer this question first. Can we hold them every 10 years and say?
The specific question about the 10 years, I'm not sure, but, and I can certainly look into it. But in terms of making legislative decisions, which this is, right, your decision about to amend the code to have different design standards or where things can be, that's a legislative decision. And so basically, it's got to be in the best interest of the public, safety, health, and welfare. And that's, that's a really vague phrase, but it really gives you a lot of latitude. So basically, we're looking to not make arbitrary decisions, right, that aren't really based on anything concrete, anything that's in the public, in the best interest of the public, health, safety, and welfare. So, you know, could you put in the code, every apartment building has to be painted red? I I don't know about that, you know, but every 10 years, I mean, if you're talking about slowing development, I'll have to look into the specific question. But I do know that you can make decisions to try and slow development.
And that's, we'll we'll take all this down, and we're going to need to have another one of these meetings. And that's, that's a good question that we can look into and do some research on.
Yes.
Whether you can limit to a certain amount of time. There might be some economic studies, but then who do you, who gets picked as far as, I I get to develop my property this year, but I can't develop mine for 10 years. It becomes some logistical things on how you.
The legal question I had to see, how much teeth we have in this town? Not to get sued by a owner of a property to say, if you don't let me put the apartments for 20 years from now, I'm going to put a super Walmart.
No, and I think that's, I think that's a valid question, and we'll we'll look into that for the next time we have this conversation.
And you basically, yeah, basically have to paint these apartments red with those designs.
Yep.
You make them green, and you get the Christmas.
Yeah, exactly. Those are pretty stringent. I I I'm not going to lie to you. They are. The houses themselves are stringent. Somebody came in today and wanted to build a modern house. I'm not sure what that is, but, you know, we don't, we haven't built a modern house here since I've been here. I know, but at any rate, you've got, you've got more than you think, to be honest with you. Because I I I deal with it every day and explain that, well, you got to put your garage back, you got to do this. Do that, go home, you know.
All right, well, in essence, we're getting time. We had a couple more than one. Shane? If you could come on up, I think you've you've got to come up here so they can hear it on.
Come to the podium, Shane.
That's the other thing, we had to make it happen.
I know.
Okay, little boy, come on up.
Just jumping off the the REIT thing, yeah, that's what most partner developers will do. Three-year in the business, you know, they'll they'll come in, spend $70 million, and they'll flip it in three years. But there are those developers out there that are long-term holders. And they'll bend over backwards to do what you want to do. Now, the question I have for Stuffy maybe is, you know, instead of putting it into your code, when you do an agreement with these, each of these developers, and you have a developer's agreement, can you write into that developer's agreement that stipulates you have to hold this property for a certain time? You can't flip it like you would a neighborhood, you know, some of these, back in the day when they flipped houses, these neighborhoods started writing into their contracts that you cannot flip your house after a year or whatever. You had to hold on to it for five years, six years, whatever. That might be an option to look at.
Yes, I think a development agreement would be the the right way to try and do that.
Your basis of the whole deal structure in the in the contract is that developer's agreement. And I think in that developer's agreement, you can spell out, I want it to look like Mayberry, I want it to do this, and I want, you cannot exceed 200 units. You cannot exceed two stories, you cannot exceed.
And that's.
Data has to be everywhere, and it has to all be block and structure.
And that's what I mean, make it, we can make, we can write whatever we want it to look like. We have to be able to stand up and enforce it.
So I think developer's agreement might be the smart way to 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 go with that. But all 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 good options. I mean, I could tell Jane, I told, you know, that that there's like really two properties I I really identified to be ripe for multifamily, and that's the the Bin Laden property. Steve, we talked about that in the McPherson property. I hate to see the stuff going down 50 from from the Turnpike East.
East.
That's like the commercial corridor. That's where you want your restaurants. That's where you want your 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 services and stuff. Can you do the 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 family, multifamily on top of a retail shirt? Yeah, that's a possibility there. But, yeah, you got to have the density, we all know that, to get the businesses to come in.
Mike, did you have something else? And, you know, the little boy said you got to stand up now, too.
I just wanted to point out, not everybody agrees with the and and in the in the long process that Oakland Park has been in play. We've had negative reactions from the the aspect of the the intensity or the density or the size of the lots. But even the people that have reacted negatively to that intensity have never talked about the lack of quality in the development. And so that that by by default would be sort of the the understanding of quality first, and then looking at some stipulations on intensity while managing the financial aspect of it for the town. So that's that's all, I'm I'm trying to make sure that we instill and and by nature of the things that we're talking about now, is is instilling that quality in. It might be, it might be three stories instead of two stories. It might be, it might be three stories instead of two stories, or it might be, uh, you know, uh, more. Yeah, yeah. Uh, but you cannot argue when you leave Winter Garden or you leave Claremont, you now have arrived in Oakland because it's going to be, we've already put in place the type of complete streets program that will, uh, begin to change the atmosphere of the corridor, the, the urban corridor of fifty. So when we have those northbound streets, when we have the ability to leave Oakland Avenue, uh, to, to shoot down to fifty without getting over from Tildenville to Tug. When we have those individual blocks, that is going to change the environment of fifty versus what is over in Winter Garden and the long, the long stretches of Claremont, uh, on fifty. So, uh, part of the complete streets program and the DOT, they have, um, designed speeds that change, that lower the design speeds. All of these things are, are integral, but without the development side of it, it doesn't really happen until we get that, that vertical. But we, we, with these design guidelines, we're controlling already a level of, of the character of Oakland for future development. And, uh, we can keep rolling with these and get even more detailed with them. But I do think that, that the, uh, the primary is, is the, the ability to, to recognize the quality first, uh, atmosphere for Oakland. That's.
And the quality and the atmosphere and it being Mayberry. And once you get that feel and the Mayberry, then it may be a hundred eighty units, it may be a hundred units, maybe two hundred, maybe three hundred. The apartment complex behind the CarMax on fifty on Claremont is a two-story, twenty-four unit building, twelve and twelve. That looks like a Mayberry style. There's like fourteen buildings, so it's two hundred sixty-four units. But if we make it look like it is like a Mayberry, you won't even notice if it's a hundred units or two hundred twenty units. I mean, we have to make everything look like Mayberry and you won't see or feel the impact that we feel on Oakland Avenue when you drive by it. That's not a Mayberry look, um, where it's at. That could have been a Mayberry look up against the Turnpike.
On the other.
Back then on Ford Street, and nobody would have impacted.
Correct.
The two-story townhome-style apartments could have been the ones that crossed from Oakland, as you per se.
If I'm talking, it's two stories.
Correct. They, they fit somewhere.
Right. And, and do realize the, the urban corridor of fifty with the planes isn't, you know, by its nature is not Mayberry. So.
Right.
Reacting to that differently than everything in the course of fifty and how we've created the wedding cake effect of density, less density, less density, you know, neighborhood. And so all of those things have been put in place. Now it's getting to the right development groups to come in and, and not just recognize it, but appreciate it.
Okay, if we do put it like Shane said on the development agreement, that you need to hold it and not, not for so long, then whoever comes and invests in our town is going to know already upfront that they can't be a flipper.
Right.
And by that already is going to give us all the, changes the whole game for us.
Well, so, and since he brought up development agreement, I got one thing to add to that. The other thing is, as we're looking at these mixed-use developments, you know, part of the issues that we had in, in negotiating these previous ones as staff, they wanted to come in and do the apartments and, and worry about the commercial. I think the development agreement is, is a vehicle that we could have them, you know, develop both at the same time. So that you're getting the commercial and the, and the multifamily. Otherwise, we're not interested in talking to you. So that's again, if we have some higher standards that come out of these conversations, that can be part of the development agreement. Um, and, uh, then making sure that the commercial part of it is part of the upfront, not the, not the afterthought. That might also help the conversation. So if we can have a smaller development with like a hundred and sixty units, but the commercial's coming in with it. You know, is, is that something that people are going to, and the looks there, is that something that people are going to be more apt to, to be all right with, you know?
As soon as you mix the uses, you get people that are actually staying there. So less traffic, less.
Get it. And that is really our point too. Our kids that grow up in Oakland, we want to be parents in Oakland. So, Hap, did you have something else?
No, I'm good. I don't, we, we'll talk about it another time. Okay. I would say one thing, it's already being done all over the country. These small towns are doing it right. So, I mean, the playbook is out there.
Yep, and that's, uh.
Yeah, I was in two of them, really. I was in two of them.
Let me finish up and then we'll let Jake, but I've got something. Is the fact that we're, we're a little different than Winter Garden, we're a little different than Claremont because they have the luxury space to do that. We're done. Two by two, water by water, and we're done. So when we're done, whatever mistakes we have, Oakland will live with fifty years from now and a hundred years from now. So if we really want to keep, and I keep saying Mayberry, but I'm going to change it to Oakland. If we want Oakland to look like Oakland a hundred years from now, we would be very, very careful right now. And we need to really force feed our residents to get involved. I mean, you know, we put out notices and, and we don't get very many people, but we need to get homeowners associations talking to their residents. We need to get Old Oakland to have some sort of representation. Maybe we get Alicia just to bombard weekly on social media. When we did that charat in twenty thirteen, it took us a long time to get there, to get a lot of people, remember Shane? And we finally got it. But if we don't get a majority of our town residents to weigh in on this, I'm going to tell you, we're not going to get it right. Because we can't make that decision without our residents.
We, we did do two community meetings prior to the other two of the projects coming. We got, and we had pretty good turnout. We can do as part of this, you know, moratorium, I can try to have another community meeting and see if I can get some people out.
Let's just bombard and do what we can.
And prior to the next time the, the commission comes back and discusses it. But we're going to make a list of some of these things that y'all discussed. And it either, it's either stuff we can put in the code or it's stuff that we can, um, know that these are the lists of things we're going to check off as part of the development agreement. Um, after we get some clarification on, on a couple of these things. And then, um, we'll come back with, with some, some, some steps to move forward.
And, and I think we all have the right intent here on what we want. It's just harder than heck to figure out how to do it, you know, it's.
It's not easy.
It is not easy. And I would have told you twenty-five years is twenty-six years ago, twenty-four years ago, whatever, when I started doing this, it was a whole lot easier than this is right now.
It's gone back and forth, but, um, you've given us some good ideas tonight, I think.
What? Yeah, we hope so.
Uh, well, I think we can, uh, sketch out some ideas, uh, uh, in terms of development agreements. These are the things that we're going to look for. We're going to look for a certain proportion uh, of, of mixed use, real mixed use with commercial and retail, whatever, whatever that turns out to be. And I want to just say one other thing, you know, we did have a rezoning proposal out there on McPherson property. And, and they just wouldn't come to the table.
I know.
Well, I don't know if everybody knows that, but, uh, I, I'd recommend a denial because they never came to the table with the commercial. They wouldn't do it. They wouldn't.
I hear you.
Wouldn't get down to it. It's just.
Do we have anything from the audience before we close out? Stephanie, about out here, did we have anyone for the workshop? This is probably off for the meeting. Let me see now, but just in case.
I see Thera out there, but, uh, she hasn't.
We good out there?
I see no.
Okay, Stephanie, you were going to say something.
Yes, um, I just wanted to let you all know, the commissioners, um, if you have a question about what are the legal boundaries of what we can do, um, please feel free to email me or call me and I'll hop on it. I'll do the research. I thought your question was, was a fantastic question and I'm.
Thank you.
I'll jump on it. Um, so anything else like that, I would be happy to research it. I'll show you the, the law and, um, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, we good? I didn't really try to mean to cut you off. I'm just trying to get everybody in, so. All right.
Certainly gonna, uh, regroup and give you back some, some written feedback and, uh, and listen to where it goes here.
Okay, well, with that, I will adjourn us at seven oh four. I'll give us a five-minute break to use the pot here, what we need to do, and, uh, we'll call back. All right, everybody, I'm going to call to order. Two, three. Four, five, six, seven, eight. All right. Okay, it is now seven ten. We're sorry, we're a few minutes late. We'll call to order the, um, got to start to say the Oakland Avenue Charter School. The Oakland Town Commission Meeting, uh, please stand for the pledge and the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the republic where we defend one man, him, under God, indivisible, with liberty and the rest of the world.
Sal, please.
Father God, thank you once again for trusting us with your town. Uh, I ask that you give us your wisdom and discernment to help us make decisions, uh, the best decisions for our town citizens. Uh, may we honor you and all we say this evening. In your glorious name, we ask, amen.
Thank you, Sal. Okay, roll call.
Hey, Commissioner Murray Mullin.
Present.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Commissioner Paul and the mayor Sturker are not here, but we have a quorum.
All righty. First up, our presentations. And we have two. We have a whole lot of people in the audience. I'm not sure why they're all here, but I'm going to read a piece of paper that will probably show that. Teacher's Appreciation Week, May second through sixth. And teacher's day on May the third. So we have a proclamation I will read. Whereas Oakland Avenue Charter School teachers mold our future citizens through their guidance and education. Whereas Oakland Avenue Charter School teachers embrace students of widely varying backgrounds and abilities. Whereas our society expects public education to provide quality education and services to all children, no matter what their background or abilities. And whereas our country's future depends in large measure upon the education of our youth, of our youth received. And whereas Oakland Avenue Charter School is proud of its commitment to teach character education and promote civic participation. Whereas Oakland Avenue Charter School teachers and staff spend countless hours outside their classrooms preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students and performing community services. And whereas the town of Oakland recognizes that its teachers and staff are providing exceptional education services to our children. We should repeat that one. Exceptional educational services to our children. Now therefore, I'm Mike Satterfield, Vice Mayor of the Town of Oakland, proclaiming the week of May two through May sixth, two thousand twenty-two as Teacher Appreciation Week and May third, two thousand twenty-two as Teacher Appreciation Day in the Town of Oakland. I urge all citizens to pay tribute to our wonderful and dedicated teachers at our charter school. Uh, and witness thereof, set my hand and cause to seal the Town of Oakland to be affixed this twenty-sixth day of April, two thousand twenty-two. First, in personal note, I call from all of us, actually, if, if you guys are just phenomenal. Can you just continue through the course? In the fifteen, twenty years we've been doing this, you guys have just hit it out of the park. But these last two years, especially with everything that we have had to go through, I would put you guys up against anybody in this country and you would come out the winners. So we thank you. Just come on, how we, all of you? I know, I know, I know. So you got to get up somehow.
Sorry, sorry. Do you want to, are you, I'll take it, okay?
Guys. All right there.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Okay.
And you are more than welcome to stay. Take care, everybody.
He still has a whole bunch of teachers online too.
And you guys online that weren't here, the same goes, you know, for everything. It was all inclusive as we thank you all so very much, um, for what you do for our town and our children. Okay. Next, we have the Charter School Technology Presentation. What we have, and I'm, and I'm sorry, Kathy or Rick couldn't be here because I wanted us all to see this. It was a very informative presentation that we got, uh, at SAC on exactly what we're doing, um, IT-wise for the school. Um, and, and how our kids are learning and just how intense it is, uh, to go that way. So, um, Jonathan, I will turn it over to you.
To get started, I do want to say that Amanda and I are very proud of the progress that we've made, uh, with technology for the past seven years. And of course, our goal is to continue that momentum, right? So students can continue to benefit from the modern, uh, classroom. I put a fully grasp, uh, where we are right now, where we want to go. Amanda and I decided that it'd be best to, uh, describe our current roles and also, um, uh, how they complement one another as we continue to, uh, have innovation. So I'm going to start off by providing you all with a high-level explanation of, of what I'm currently involved with and where I'm looking to go, I'm moving in the future. And so those three main areas are infrastructure, uh, hardware deployment and system over device management. So starting off with, uh, infrastructure, uh, we can think of it as, uh, a foundation for health, right? So without a solid foundation, that health, uh, will fall apart. So that's why it's so, uh, critical to have those components in place, uh, when it comes to, uh, network infrastructure. Because with that, um, we're able to deploy hardware, applications and different solutions. So, um, so I'm actually going to be talking about five areas when it comes to, uh, network infrastructure. And so the first is, uh, internet bandwidth. And so, uh, another real quick, uh, illustration, we can think of bandwidth as a, a half highway with different, uh, lanes. And so back in, uh, twenty fifteen, uh, OACS had, uh, thirty megabits per second. Currently, we can access the internet at much higher speeds now on five G on our phones. And so, um, at the time, we had several devices. Uh, you can think of those devices as cars in those lanes. We're taking those devices and trying to put them through, uh, one lane with that thirty meg pipe. So essentially, it was enough bandwidth to protect for those devices. And it certainly, uh, caused issues for students and staff. And so now, and so gradually, we've made, uh, upgrades, uh, over, uh, the years. And so currently, uh, we're at one gigabit right now. It's a dedicated fiber, uh, circuit. And so that allows us to not only accommodate the current devices, but also scale, right? Add more devices, uh, moving into, uh, the future. But to give you an idea, it's thirty times the amount of bandwidth that we had in twenty fifteen. So, uh, we definitely come, um, a long way.
That's a lot of lanes.
Yes, it is.
We need that on I four.
Yes, or, or Oakland Avenue usage.
The second, uh, uh, component to that infrastructure is our UTM, our unified threat management, uh, appliance. And, uh, so this appliance is essentially is a firewall, provides with web filtering and antivirus scanning. Um, and it's also, um, our wireless controller. So we have Wi-Fi access points across, uh, campus as you see in your printout. And so this, uh, appliance also allows me to, uh, manage those different, um, access. And so essentially, that is our security, uh, appliance. We also have, uh, several servers, but I just wanted to discuss, I'm going to just talk about our domain controller, which essentially, uh, is handles, uh, our printing. It has our software for, uh, backup and disaster recovery. And it houses all of our teacher and student accounts. And so, uh, this is an important, uh, component to our infrastructure because, uh, these accounts synchronize with all of our third-party applications, which allow that single sign-on process for all of our students, um, whenever they access those, um, tools that they have access to. The fourth area is, uh, our switches. So these are essentially our connection points in each building. And there's two in building A, uh, building C and D. And so these are all, these are how all of our wire devices ultimately connect back to, uh, the network and also the internet. And lastly, uh, our Wi-Fi. So we currently have twenty access. And lastly, our Wi-Fi, so we currently have twenty access points. Uh, sixteen of them are running Wi-Fi 6, which is the latest in Wi-Fi technology. Uh, those were implemented last summer, and we still need to upgrade four of those access points. And essentially, this is just what allows for wireless connectivity at the school. So those are the five areas of infrastructure, that's in the top left-hand corner of that printout in front of you. So the second area that I'm also involved with is hardware deployment, so, uh, OACS is considered a hybrid environment, so there's Apple and Windows devices. As far as staff devices, uh, we have sixty devices, they're primarily Dell Windows 10 laptops. Um, and we also have desktop PCs, of course, for our front office of staff. And then we also have two MacBook Pros, we have one, our STEM lab teacher. Um, we have a MacBook Air used by students, along with our STEM lab teacher for video production, that's how our morning announcements are created. And then of course, we have our point-of-sale system for our cafeteria. For our student, uh, devices, we have three hundred and seventy-one Dell Windows 10 laptops. And currently, in our gifted STEM and our fourth and fifth grade classes, uh, we have one-to-one, so what does that mean? So it's a one-to-one student-to-device ratio, so each student has their own assigned device in these classrooms, and in these special classrooms as well. So each room has twenty-four laptops, and so, uh, there are many benefits to one-to-one, right? So it allows the entire class to participate at the same time, it allows for accurate monitoring, right? So a teacher can actively view what's going on on each device, because it's assigned to each student. It also teaches responsibility, right, so students will, uh, when they move on to middle school and high school, will have an assigned device. And so, uh, they're starting here at OACS knowing how to be responsible for that device. And also, God forbid, if we were to go back to this concerning, something were to happen, students could take that device home and continue to access what they need to access, so, uh, many benefits of one-to-one. Now, K through 3, we're two-to-one, so it means there's just two students per device. And so, uh, in our K and first grade classrooms, we have a total of sixteen iPads in each room. And then in our second and third grade classrooms, uh, we have sixteen Dell Windows 10 laptops. Also, uh, we also have twenty-two ViewSonic interactive displays for our teachers and students, and this has been an awesome tool for our teachers. So essentially, it's a large screen TV on a cart, it has a PC built into the back, twenty Windows 10, and it has a very powerful PowerPoint application, so not only does it allow our teachers to write in digital ink, they can import videos, pictures, documents from OneDrive, uh, and make them fill their, their space whenever they need to teach a lesson. Students are also able to throw any documents from their laptop or iPad onto the screen, and teachers also have that ability as well, so that's that collaboration and interactivity component of it.
That would be casting?
Exactly, yes.
They can cast?
So, um, it also serves as a PC, so teachers can log in, browse the web, access documents. And, uh, I would say the cherry on top is that each display has a webcam on top. That allows for virtual field trips, classes can connect with other classes, and if a teacher can't be present in class, they can connect via Microsoft Teams over the internet and teach remotely. It prevents that interruption in instruction, so, uh, it's been an awesome tool. And we're looking, of course, to add, add more. So that, that last piece that I'm responsible for is system management, and so we have two. Um, when it comes to device management, uh, the first is LightSpeed, it's a tool that teachers use to monitor what's going on on the student devices. Essentially, there's software installed on each Windows 10 laptop that gathers data, sends it to a portal that teachers have access to, and they're able to view web browsing history, they can lock screens if they need to, force all students to stay on path by going to one website. So there's many functions of this very powerful tool. Um, LightSpeed also serves as our MDM, our mobile device management system, so we also use it to deploy applications to our iPads. Um, for our K, first and STEM lab classrooms, and also gifted, uh, the Apple classroom application is used, so, um, it also allows teachers in these rooms to monitor what's going on, um, on the iPad. So it's almost like the Apple equivalent to what LightSpeed is to Windows devices. So now that I've gotten, uh, everything that we currently have, the question is where we need to go, right? And so, as far as infrastructure, a lot of our infrastructure, a lot of those components were purchased between 2015 and 2017. They're currently end of life, and so I am looking to upgrade our security appliance, our firewall, also our server, uh, the switches, and, uh, upgrade those four remaining access points that need to be, uh, that need to run Wi-Fi 6. Um, as far as additional hardware components, um, looking to refresh staff computers, which were also purchased in 2017. They've also reached, uh, end of life, and, uh, the goal is to go one-to-one in K through 3, when you're printout, you'll notice that certain classrooms are, are red, so the goal is to flip those and turn those green, right? So make sure those classrooms, um, can benefit from that one-to-one student device ratio that the fourth and fifth are benefiting from. We're also looking to refresh devices in gifted and STEM, those devices were purchased back in 2017, so of course we're looking to replace those. And also adding ten interactive displays, so currently VPK doesn't have any, uh, K and first are sharing, and we don't have one in music and art, so the goal is to phase out the projectors in these classrooms and replace them with, uh, this great tool. Um, and then lastly, uh, for software, uh, we are looking to migrate over to Windows 11, which is the current version of Windows that's available. And also looking to, uh, purchase, uh, 365 licensing for staff, so currently staff uses, uh, OTPS licensing. We have run into a few issues as far as version control and, uh, how these applications synchronize, and so we just feel that's best, that we have our own licensing for, um, our own school. Right, so those are the areas that I wanted to discuss and I'm responsible for. And then now Amanda's gonna speak to you all about the educational software tools that, uh, we've been firing for students.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Any questions for Jonathan, or anything you just?
Do we have a price tag of your, 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 your plan, Scott, you know, what's that price tag? To get everything that you need.
Oh, it's roughly two hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay. Two hundred and seventy thousand?
We actually have, um, pretty well, whatever's needed to be able to accomplish these activities. From what I'm saying through, um, the elementary and secondary, uh, funds, our two three months, um, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars planned out of those funds. To purposefully, talking about, one discussed the grant funding, we're after, has her, um, two funds to purchase something, um, more immediately, because of wanting times, also, we are anticipating anywhere between fifty to sixty thousand dollars coming back from PTO, um, this year from fundraising that will support the purchase of those interactive, or so. We're, we're in a very good situation to accomplish these tasks right now. And obviously, um, funding will come in for, you know, the future in regards to being able to keep up with the demand, because they, things, it'll be for.
Yeah.
Did you get that number from PTO, fifty to sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah, alright, yeah, yeah. And she, she also asked you, um, to mention, what's, what's the grant process?
Yeah, so, uh, last year, we applied for the Emergency Connectivity Fund, it's a fund that was provided by the FCC, it was to help bridge the gap. Because during the pandemic, a lot of students didn't have access to devices and whatnot, and so we applied for that, and we were awarded, uh, funds for our Apple devices that we're looking to get, and also our Windows 10 laptops, and so that would be additional funding that.
How much was that?
It was about twenty-five thousand for laptops and about twenty thousand for iPads.
So let me, let me, let me, let me make this as principal, um, whenever you guys, can you share with us on a regular basis the needs? Because a lot of us are out in, you know, in the field, and we hear stuff, I didn't, if, if I would've known that it was a need, I would've made sure, I would've, I would've plugged into those educational resources need when I was in DC for the town, so just, you know, listen.
Typically, the time of year that was not, what our needs are compared to next year, so absolutely, I think that's a, it's a really, um, great conversation, that was only going into budget here, for sure.
Do we have a dedicated grant writer, or someone who does grants on a regular basis?
You do not, it's typically, they're coming out of, um, my efforts, Jonathan, that hurts.
Okay. Because the town, we have a, a access portal, portal to grants, and there's a lot of grants that want to state level. Um, I will, if you could, try to find a, a parent that can help, um, research grants or just kind of quarterback it, because we could get almost little or no help from the state to access grants. And so I'm always pushing, trying.
And, um, Pam Stewart was here, she had actually helped us try to draft a Q2 very, um, after that, I know, uh, we kind of lost touch in the midst of COVID in regards to thinking about those things, but for sure.
Well, there's great opportunities that you can plug in through the town, so I know Mike Parker has the access on a person, so you can talk to Mike and he can get you in contact with the Florida League of Cities and put in educational grants, and we can get somebody to write a grant for us for little or nothing, to help, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, every, uh, every Monday, we get an update.
Right, right.
Once a week, we get an update.
So you guys can connect on that, and add, um, a search tool for educational grants. Because when I was in DC, there were, there are tons of dollars for infrastructure as relates to broadband and educational stuff, so I mean, I mean, it's overflowing. I, I, I would tell you, to be honest with you, they can't even spend it all. Yeah, so I, I didn't know.
Horrible problem.
There you go, Jonathan, music to your ears, right? Get with Mike, yeah.
And we have these Esther funds, which are federal money also.
Right, right.
And we'll talk a little more about that during the budget, because that's a two-year, um, pot of money that will be, will be tapping into for the next two years. So we're gonna talk a little bit about that as they're putting together their plan, we'll bring that to you as part of the budget for, for next year, to show you where that's going.
Yeah, but I was actually in several work groups, and they were talking about infrastructure, especially around broadband, and it was like, you know, asking all the cities and towns around the country, please help us spend this money before we lose it.
Can I, can I just make one statement real quick? So, so Jonathan's my employee, works out of the school, but, I mean, I just wanted to say how much we appreciate Jonathan, because if you look at the list of everything he does for the school, you would think that would be a full-time job. But on top of what he does at the school, he manages all this stuff for the town as well. Um, he's amazing, like, like, I, I can't say enough about Jonathan, he set up the whole Arts and Heritage Center, everything that had to go into the workings of that building, so he just does everything, and it's just amazing, and he does it, and he's always smiling, so I just want to give him big.
Although you weren't smiling that night, we couldn't use the battery going.
Okay, hi, I'm Amanda Comacher, um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm the technology and assessment coordinator at the school. Um, so in the packets, the next page, um, or on the backside, that's sure, it's printout or digital. Um, I have put together a little spreadsheet of all the EdTech platforms that we currently have in place at the school, to kind of give you guys a snapshot of all of the different programs that our students are using and our staff are using. Um, I sorted things out by, um, subject area in regards to the students, just to kind of let you easily see exactly what these platforms are helping our students with, um, and same thing with the staff programs. So, like I said, this is our current, um, access, these are the current programs we have. When I started, um, in this role a few years ago, we really just had, uh, just iReady basically, and maybe, I think Brain Pop and a couple of things. We've really come a long way, like Jonathan, Jonathan said earlier, um, and it's really exciting. Um, it's almost to the point that it's hard to keep up with everything we have right now, so I'm really trying to hone in on training these teachers and students on really how to use these things, um, effectively and, and to the, the best of, you know, what it's capable of. So if you wanna, um, kind of go through a, a few of the, the programs I wanted to highlight for you guys, our, um, ClassLink, um, that's a single sign-on platform that we purchased last year, um, it, it would have been wonderful to have had during our shutdown, and it's during the shutdown that I realized we needed something like that. So that's been a huge blessing to have that, so essentially, um, our students, all of our staff members, we log into this ClassLink platform, and it has all of the applications that we need to access right in that one platform. Um, and we just have to click on the apps and it will automatically sign us into everything. So it's a huge, huge help to have that, um, and like I said, that's used across the school, every student, every staff member. Um, iReady is one that we've used for years, it's a blended learning program. Um, it's a diagnostic and instructional tool, um, that's something that's been used, you know, across the county and state. Um, and we use that to kind of determine our instructional growth throughout the year for our students. Um, literally is a new one that we've added on just recently, and that's actually a, a reading assessment tool to determine the student's reading level, um, helps determine their comprehension and their fluency, um, and so that's, we've, we've gone school-wide with that, and we're actually utilizing that to then piggyback on to some other programs we have, we have Reading A to Z, that is that reading, um, level program. So we can take that level that they're getting assessed on, and then place them in the right reading level in that program, as well as in us with, uh, physical books. Um, Breakout EDU is, um, a, it's a fun platform that we have, we've had it for a couple of years, but it really incorporates, um, thinking outside the box, there's a digital platform as well as actual physical boxes that we have that the teachers can pull up all these different, like, escape room type activities, and then the kids can break out. Um, and then, um, Typing.com, we added on this year too, um, just to help these students still continue to work on and learn their digital citizenship skills, their typing and keyboarding skills, because they're obviously on these devices all the time, and it's only gonna get more and more as they get older into middle school and high school, so we need them to be well-equipped for handling that. Um, then, on the other side, for staff programs, um, obviously, ClassLink, Office 365, Bloom's is our, um, communication tool that we use with parents, um, SchoolDocs is another communication-type platform, we, um, do all of our back-to-school forums in there, and we use that as a communication tool to email parents as a whole, um. And then iObservation is our staff observation platform, um, and then what I listed down at the bottom is some possible future additions. Essentially, I plan to pretty much keep things the same, I don't really want to expand too much more, because like I said, we have so much available at our fingertips, and we're utilizing a lot of it, but I really want to maximize, um, even further the programs that we have. Um, but there is the potential of, uh, adding Classroom Champions, which is a social-emotional learning program, um, and possibly Generation Genius, which is a science, like a, kind of a new version of Bill Nye-type activities and videos, so it's pretty fun. Um, and that's one that's been requested a lot in the last couple of years, so I might look into adding that one. Um, we are also looking at a brainware program, which, um, could help them to develop different, um, learning capabilities, it, it kind of tests out exactly where they're weak in their brain functioning and kind of can build on that, so we're looking at that as a possibility too. Um, so that's kind of where we're at.
Cool.
Very good. Again, thank you very much, and, um, for the both of you guys, that, you know, it's not like you don't do a whole lot during the day, so we do appreciate you coming out here in the evening time to, you know, to fill us in, I did think it was important enough for Commission to, to kind of see where we were with the, uh, technological line of the school, so thank you all so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Piggyback on what Lisa said, I, I wanted to say that after Amanda's been speaking, that I want to echo the same message that, um, in the partnership of Jonathan and Amanda, it's dynamite, they're on top of it, they're, they, they did, like, you remember, met anyone who did, again, to have understanding, they stand top of things. Um, it really does need for a solid environment at the school for, um, people who could staff owners, so, um, very lucky to have two great people.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Alright guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Anne, it's the same, if you guys don't want to stick around, you can skedaddle, you know, it's. All right, Anne, it's the same. If you guys don't want to stick around, you can skedaddle, you know, it. Fired. All right, uh, next up. We have public forum. Yeah, portion of our program where if anyone has anything they would like to ask us to talk about that is not on the agenda. Please let us know. This would be the time. Uh, keep it as brief as you possibly can. Start with the audience, anybody in the audience?
We have one right here. It's okay, come on.
Come on up.
Been patiently waiting for her turn.
Hello. Um, we recently had construction.
Start, start your name.
Oh, sorry. I'm Vanessa Reed. I've been a resident of Oakland since nineteen eighty-six.
Say it again. Say it again. I want you to say it again. I want people to hear. Say it again. How long you been here?
Since nineteen eighty-six.
For a lot of us, oh.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we recently had construction in. On West Allen Avenue. That's where I live and I was concerned about having that area paved like the road as far as. Um, that goes because they paved it all the way on to power up until the end and they didn't do anything else, so.
On which road are we talking?
Oh, and, and you have to read his shirt, right?
I'm sorry?
Your shirt.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
A little nervous. She wanted me to come, but I wanted to stand up anyway.
Oh, yeah, well, before you start, explain why you're right.
Because I listened to her, that's why.
I have to tell you, that was one heck of an answer.
My name's. Eric is our name to say so. Eric, you're one. And I do not reside in Oakland. However, she's my fiance and I came to school.
Congratulations.
Here's the deal, um. They've done a beautiful job of paving a lot of the streets that were digged up, dug up for, I guess it's for subject reasons.
For sure.
Okay, so they, they dug it up and they came back and paved a lot of streets. However, on that one little portion of where her, her and her mother's home is located, they neglected to continue to pave down there. So obviously we know if you pave a certain portion and another portion isn't. One thing that happens is property value is affected by that. One place is paved, the other isn't. Likelihood of them having equal values, not, not gonna happen. That's one. Two, drainage. If you have something that's newly paved, there's an elevation. That elevation causes water to continue to.
Run off.
Run off down that direction, which is causing, which it's always been dirt over there, but now it's getting even worse. Because there's more dirt coming to the point where it's getting pretty much to the door. Obviously, there, there's an issue and she wanted to see what she can do to try to impress a fund, you guys, that. It's just a matter of another fifty yards of paved, of road that should be paved, that would make it, um, a little bit better situation for her. Okay.
What's your physical address?
Four one eight West Sattler Avenue.
And this is Mike Parker.
She lives in the last house on Zattler as you go up Pollard, turn up here. Decorated up real nice and everything and the road was not paved before. Um, and that is the same road that we've, we own a lot and some other stuff on the other side. So I, I know the, the marching order for paved roads, but I ask her to please come here because she had a lot of questions. And, you know, the only way to really get it started is to bring it before you guys, so.
Okay. Well, let us take a look and try and figure something out.
Yeah. So essentially we had the grants, you know, this was all grant funded, so they were only going to replace what was part of the project.
Right, yeah, so.
I just want to make sure that.
Okay, but it's certainly something to look at.
It's not, it's not a lot of pavement and there are some drainage concerns, I agree. And it would just finish it. I don't know why that road was left out. It's the only road over there that wasn't paved back when they paved them, so.
We have a lot of I-don't-knows.
Yeah.
You know, so, but we'll take a look for you.
Okay, thank you.
Cool.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're harmless. I say we're harmless.
All right, that's it there. How about, uh? Out here, do we have anybody, um? Looking in that has anything they would like to add?
I don't see any hands.
Okay. All right, well, I will, uh, move us along then to the consent agenda. Has everyone had time to look at it, read it, dissect it, do what they want with it? It's a pleasure.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the consent agenda as it stands. Second.
Motion is second and the other discussion. All for the vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have our consent agenda. We'll move on to other policy matters. Five East Oakland Avenue. Um, Jay, I believe you're up.
Yes, we have a. So, uh, yeah, what, it'll work, I don't know.
I got it.
You got it, thanks. Um, I'm, uh, East Oakland Avenue, it's just a little brick building out there. And if y'all don't know where that is, you don't live it on. At any rate.
So why you got a map up there then?
Pardon me?
So why you got a map up there then?
Well, it's just form. Trying to keep the, keep the, keep the, uh.
Formalities.
Form, you know. Anyhow, so you see it there, uh, it's very lonely, it's really lonely sitting there. And fortunately, somebody has come in and they're going to actually add to it. Uh, so it's going to be a nice, uh, a little history edition there and some addition in the back. And it's still going to have a nice street cover, uh, moving along. And so you see it there, uh, a little bit, uh, more detailed. And fortunately, we also have the, uh, the applicant and his, uh, his designer here. So I want you to just take a look at this site plan if you haven't seen it. And notice that on the east side is the proposed parking area, which will be, you know, pretty finite from what. See, you see now with the little, little building there and then you see the, uh, uh, part of the building that goes over towards the east or the west rather. And, uh, so, uh, moving on, you can see kind of what it looks like there and right now today. And so here's, here's the building and then this area is, is where the, wow, that really. It's got an interesting reflection there where the parking would be. And so there has to be at least one street taken out there to make the parking work. And then you have the neighbor and, uh, they've done a pretty good job, uh, the applicant of, of making sure that this. Will not impose visually on the neighborhood, nice, nice little house there. And what we have had, and I want to stop here, um, because, uh, I'm going to let the, uh, the applicant. And his representative talk a little bit about this. Uh, because we've had some dialogue, uh, with the plant, planning and zoning board about, uh, some kind of fence or something between parking. In the house, so, uh, a couple of bit, the, you know, people, you know how they fall up to a parking, uh, space and sometimes they'll miss. Miss somehow or another and you push forward. Definitely don't want to run over any children, God forbid. And, uh, so, uh, I'm going to let, uh. The applicant's representative talk about what he has in mind.
Thank you. So basically, uh, one of the criteria for the, for the development. The, uh, two owners prior to this, the, uh, owner that, that, uh, built the building in ninety-six. Um, had one proposal to, uh, bring buildings on the east or, or, uh, in addition to the east and west. Um, that felt like it was a little too imposing, uh, to bring the commercial structure. Uh, that close to the residential. So, uh, the ability to have the parking and, and really start the process with the, with the structure to the west. Felt like it was most respectful to the, uh, historic type of craftsman house, the trees. And, and, uh, we were able to save, uh, fourteen of the seventeen trees. There are three, there are two in the building footprint and one at the, at the entrance, uh, to the parking. The parking will, um, or, or the, the overall development will follow the, uh. Complete streets and the, uh, uh, street, uh, guidelines that, uh, GAI has put into place. So this would be the first project to come in under those, uh, uh, proposed guidelines that, 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 uh, G I. So we would have some parallel parking on the street. Uh, we, uh, incorporate the sidewalk, uh, and have, uh, the structure, you know, again to the west. To, to really respect the, uh, the residential piece. Um, the resident had requested, uh, that a fence, uh, be put up and by all means that, uh. Um, is an appropriate request, but also probably something that would be mandated as well as part of the overall zoning code from use. Uh, residential use to commercially use. The fence that we've, uh, uh, looked at, that would be most conducive, uh, for that area is a living fence. So it's really a structure, a framed structure with, uh, uh, pick wire, uh, that goes in. And then, uh, the preferred, uh, uh. Landscape would be, uh, having, uh, uh, jasmine, uh, growing into it. We've done that in a few places. This is an example in, uh, in, uh, Oakland Park. Uh, the, this is another example of, of, uh, that we would propose a living fence. Uh, and, and there's a cross, this is a cross brace, uh, fence with, with the, 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 uh, the wire mesh in, in between. So, uh, very quickly, uh, it is established and, and if anybody, uh, would like to go and look at it. It's on Lake Brim Drive in, uh, in Oakland Park, um, at the, uh, Neighborhood Pool. Um, this is the fence before the construction, so you can see how that looks prior. Uh, but we would add a cross brace just, uh, for visual effect. So, uh, the, the building design itself is, is meant to follow the, uh. Uh, the, uh, uh, Design District Code, uh, that is really starting to. Try to imply the unique characteristics of Oakland versus more of the mercantile, uh, design. That, uh, is either, uh, the urban corridor, uh, design character and/or downtown Winter Garden. So we, we really don't want to replicate what's going on in downtown Winter Garden. We, again, what we talked about earlier today was the, uh, the quality of the Mayberry and the character of the, the materials. And identifying, uh, Oakland as a, a, a smaller town, uh, piece. So this starts that process. It starts it with a breakdown of a thirty-two-foot mass. Doing this in, in thirds. And so you have a two-thirds, two-story portion, and then you have a third on the western edge. So you can see how the roof structure is breaking that mass down, uh, from thirty-two to, uh, able to twelve feet. And, and, uh, I, I think it's a twenty-two, I can't recall the actual dimensions, but. Uh, the other intent is that we have a fifty-foot piece of property that is not for sale on the corner. And the best, uh, potential use for that later, uh, in, in, then, uh. If, if that ever goes up for sale, uh, the applicant has reached out to the, the landowner. She was not ready to sell at this time. But, uh, um, they have had dialogue and the idea is that we would continue, um, a, uh, a building. Or an addition to this building and then, uh, terminate that with a porch element on the street. Um, so the character of that, that, uh, building is, begins the, the, uh. The, the potential involvement of, of finalizing this corner, which is a very important corner, obviously for, uh, for Oakland. Uh, we think the boss piece on the south side is equally, uh, probably even, you know, more so because of the scale of that, that property. Um, is, is fairly large and we want to make sure we're influencing, uh, the right type of design, uh, criteria in, in, in the, uh. As this is the first one to come in, uh, into the town, uh, in this part of the Design District Code. So, um, a little more rural character, some, some brackets, large overhangs, metal roof. Um, siding, uh, over, over, uh, concrete block construction. Uh, and, uh, lots of, lots of glass, lots of windows, lots of light coming into the space. We also have, uh, in addition to the backside of the existing building. And, uh, that's a fairly simple, uh, hip roof, uh, on the, on the backside as well. Uh, some of the other things, uh, I would, I would potentially, uh, like to mention is, is there is a reason for where the building sits. Uh, north and south on the, on the, on the property. And that is there's two significant trees that are forward of the building that we wanted to make sure we had.
Any questions?
Oh, I think this is a great building. I think this is what we're, this is Mayberry. This is, this is definitely what we talked about earlier, to do something like this. And as the neighbor reached out and.
You were at the B and Z, uh, meeting.
Okay.
And discussed a, uh, fence, uh, piece.
Okay, so they.
Uh, I should also mention that the intent on the, uh, driveway of the, of the, uh, parking would be, uh, some sort of brick. And then a natural base, either shell or, uh, granite type of, uh, parking. And then you can see where we're folding out for, uh, for the tree saves as well.
Will the sidewalk be also included in this buildup?
Correct, yep. The sidewalk will be edge to edge on the property itself, of course. When, when, whenever the next development happens, uh, you know, it's going to stop at, at the property line. But we're hopeful that it sets the tone and the parking as well, parallel on, on Oakland Avenue is the suggested. Parking type, uh, for, for Oakland Avenue.
Uh, are we at the phase of what potential use would be?
Yes, um, primarily office. Uh, there was some potential thought that, you know, maybe three or four hundred, five hundred square feet could be a little retail shop as well. Uh, but, uh, basically it's office. Uh, I'll also just comment that it's a very small building. You have an elevator. And typically, uh, I recommend buildings, uh, be, uh, close to, uh, eight thousand square feet. Uh, this is half of that. And so there's a, a good deal of, of, uh, cost going into the elevator. Uh, that's a, that's an eighty-eight code requirement, but, uh, normally that, that would do. Basically instruct the, the, uh, the performer, you know, and say, okay, we'll do one story. And that's why the previous development thoughts were going one story on both sides of the existing building.
So it's because this will have an elevator in it.
Yes.
And then one to, to office space.
It's like in the middle, okay.
Your parking spaces, um, talked about eventually if they could buy the, the western side of the property, would there be enough parking spaces to accommodate if that future?
We'd, we'd have to, uh, come in from the backside and add a couple, uh, some, some more parking spaces, but.
There's room for that, that would be.
Yep. And the incremental, uh, piece to that is that, uh, in, in, uh, another side note, is as a fifty-foot lot. Uh, to do a building on its own would be, uh, very difficult and probably a very, very small building to, to, uh. Have the.
It gives the opportunity for when the future, if you do have the owner next door sell to connect the buildings. That's use that asset of the elevator to cross over to the second floor. But you have a, a porch or wraparound porch in the bottom, which goes a lot with what we like to see.
Would love to see that, yes.
All right. Got anything else? Me either. What do we need to do here?
Well, we need a vote.
On just, uh, to go ahead with it, what's the?
That's right.
Okay.
Plan in elevations.
Well, you guys are going to have to read that now because you're the only two of you.
Yeah, should the fence be part of the approval?
Yeah.
Just to, to clearly put that in there.
Fence?
Yes.
So I'll, uh, make a recommendation of, for approval of the parent, but A R B and the planning zone zoning board recommend a full of this proposed five east Oakland app. Based on the consistency and with zoning requirements and the criteria set forth for the town center design district.
for the Town Center Design District in addition to the uh, fence that's been requested by the neighbor.
Second.
And we should have a public comment.
Okay.
Excuse me, I forgot to say that part.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have anything from the audience? Not here. Do we have anything from the audience far? Any questions, comments?
I'll, I'll just uh, add that the, uh, the applicant is also a resident of Oakland.
Okay. Yeah. Can you come up?
My, my children's school teacher.
Very good.
And you are, and Good Heart Take Your Two was on the, the Zoom, so.
Your name?
And you, your name? Andrew Jacobs.
Cool.
So you're pot committed?
What's that?
You're pot committed with Oakland?
Yes. Yeah.
Cool. Again, from afar, do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, I will bring us, do you guys have any questions? All right, we've uh, had a vote. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed? We have the recommendation.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Plans are uh, on, on uh, in a design development phase, so everything's in cat. We're waiting for this approval and, and we're, we're, I'm going to get, you know, in on daily to get it finished. It, it, it's, it's, you know, they're in the office right now and they, they uh, need, need that space desperately. So I, I would say in a couple of months you'll see it.
And from the looks of the building, I'm just like, I can hear Andy whistling going down by the lake now, so thank you. Yeah. All right, guys. Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. We move on. We have a couple of resolutions. Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash oh four, I reckon to be read. There you go.
Um, I don't need to read it.
Okay. Janie's talk about.
There's really not much. Uh, you have the whole plaque for the Lake Apocac Sound in your packet. It's eighteen lots. Uh, finally, uh, finally, uh, we're at the staff level, very happy to get this one out of there. It's been thinking around, literally, for years. And uh, so it's meeting all of the detailed specifications in need for a plaque, which are uh, exacting. We want to make sure we have the right town clerk on, on there. It came out, it's the wrong one. You know, it's just a lot of little, you know.
I guess there's a story there, but we'll.
You gotta get it right. You gotta get it right.
Well, you have to have it right. It has to be a hundred percent every little detail.
Well, uh, uh, and uh, uh, again, the challenge with this, this is Lake Apocac uh, Sound Phase Two. Um, so this is the one that straddles both Lake County and the town of Oakland. So what, what you've got in front of you is consistent with the rest of the development that's in Lake County. Um, so, you know, this is, you know, again, tying two, two different jurisdictions into one development. So it, it really is consistent with the rest of the development. It may not have been exactly how we would have done it if we had the whole development here in Oakland. But um, the entrance to this is in Oakland and it's, uh, you can see by the plat, you know, the, the, the lots. There's three houses on the lake. You've got a, a little bit of infrastructure there and uh, the total of how many? Um, eighteen houses, uh, and some stormwater and some other tracks, so.
Questions? Comments?
How do I have any questions on this?
I'm just gonna throw anything now. All right, um, how about out there? Do we have anybody with any questions?
No hands.
Cool. All right. Once again, one of you guys are up.
So then I'll make the motion.
Motion that through resolution twenty-twenty-four dash zero four, Lake Apocac Sound Phase Two Final Plaid.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose? And we have twenty-twenty-two oh four. Next, we have twenty-twenty-two oh five, which is a stop sign on the trail. Um, Mike was here. Well, you just have to stay after school and hear it again.
It was your favorite subdivision, too.
Sure. Lake Apocac Sound. Um, there's an end out that goes with this.
I will gladly provide it.
Thank you. Steve, I know you know this by heart, but. Oh. The record.
Okay, so um, I know you've heard a lot about this in the past. Um, this is the stop signs of the West Orange Trail Intersections. Um, the uh, agenda memo has detailed info in it. Uh, read it at your, at your own pace. Um, I did do a little PowerPoint. Um, this, um, so what we did is we hired uh, Myra Monreal to actually put her stamp of approval or her stamp of recommendation on it just so that it wasn't staff out there uh, making decisions and everything. Um, so study criteria. Uh, we studied the area of uh, from Winter Garden City Limits to Hole Island Drive. And that's not just one corridor. That's, that's the whole thing. Uh, she did a review of prior studies, which was the Mobility Master Plan in twenty-seventeen, Metro Plan in twenty-sixteen, and the F dot uh, plan for Cross Porter Trail. It was done. That might be, not be correct. Anyway, the F dot study.
They're working on that one.
Okay, that was, yeah, working on it.
The coast-to-coast.
That's it. Uh, existing conditions, uh, the present day conditions were analyzed. We reviewed crash history for the past five years. And here's the big one, the trail volume. You know, our, our whole premise for this is there's more traffic on the trail now than there has been since its inception nineteen ninety-four. And right now, the county has provided us with four hundred and fifty thousand trips on the trail each year. That comes out to what, thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand a month? That's a lot. A lot of people. And that's just in this area between Kalani Station and uh, whatever that next uh, school, school road is up there.
Those are the. Yeah, the, the counter is actually at the Butterfly Garden right there.
There you go. So she did make some recommendations, um, where the, it's pretty simple. Where the trail and roadways intersect at ninety degrees, she recommended the trail users have priority. Now, that would be Winter's Landing, Star, Arrington, Tub, Cross, Daniels, Walker, and Nixon. So those are ninety-degree angles. Uh, these intersections would have signage requiring vehicles to come to a complete stop. The existing Winter's Landing Drive and Tub Street signage uh, will be looked at and brought into conformance if it's not in conformance to uh, standards. All of the trail stop signs will remain as is. They belong to the Orange County. And that's uh, that's what'll make the decision if they come out or if they're changed or whatever. Uh, we have, we have had quite a bit of dialogue with the county on this. And then all trail crosswalk uh, markings will be repainted and freshened up. So that was the first recommendations. Now here's some additional considerations. Where trail and roadways do not intersect at ninety degrees or have a limited stacking distance. So that would be Machete Trail, the Jefferson Gully thing that's going on over there. And um, where there's construction taking place, again, Machete Trail, we're putting in a turn lane there. And scooting Machete Trail slightly to the west. So that's, we're not going to touch that right now. It's under construction. Hole Island Drive and Simeon Road area, that's just wrapping up with construction. And then there is the County Line Court, which is a privately owned roadway. So those intersections will require further analysis to determine what, what they need, if anything. So with that, I mean, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. And um, staff recommends that uh, finishing the top for us, looking at twenty-two oh five, as presented. If you have any questions before, be happy to try to answer.
Anything?
Yeah, um, I got a question for the West Gully Avenue. I know that you have this here as um, in the future. I know the, I, I know the Machete and Hole Island. They all make sense because they're in the construction. There's no construction right now on Gully. That, the stop sign that exists now is on the west side of the trail. Uh, and it's not when you approach on Gully Avenue towards the trail. So right now, as you can, if you go down Gully Avenue going west, you have to actually go over the trail to get to your stop sign.
To stop at Jefferson.
Correct. So if you have to get to over the West Orange Trail to go to the stop sign, it's going to confuse the drivers when there's speed, bikes riding through there. I suggest that we put the stop.
And that's the same problem we have with Machete. You go across the trail to the stop sign.
Right.
Same thing with County Line Court. You go across this trail to the stop sign. We're going to look at all of those and, and I, and Gully's one of those. It's not the ninety-degree either that, that um, I put as part of her recommendation. But we know we've got to make some changes. We're going to freshen up the markings there so that we can see the trail and know that it's there. But we, we do need to look at that and, and that will be part of our, our, our um, uh, as we look at these other three.
Side of the Machete stop sign on, on.
You go, you, if you're coming from the nature preserve, you go across the trail and then you stop.
Right.
See that?
See, and so we know about all of these. All three of those have the same situation. And so we're going to look to, as this construction gets done, we're going to make those changes. But she wasn't ready to make that recommendation until like the turn lane gets put in and the construction down at Hole Island gets done, and then we can start looking at those. So we, we definitely are looking at those. Um, and this, if this can fall into that same situation.
So going, going back to your Gully scenario, so right now there's a trail crossing sign on the, this side of Gully. And then on the west side is the stop sign for Jefferson. And then if you go down Jefferson, there is no, there is, when you go down Jefferson and cross the trail, I don't remember what's on Jefferson ahead of the trail. I think it is a trail crossing. But there is no stop sign or anything to cross the trail. So we're looking at all of that. Along with that, the Bryley Farms uh, construction plans are in now and uh, for Phase Two. I believe you sent them this thing.
This has been a long-term problem. We're trying to get it fixed. So I, I do, we're, we're going to make all of those right. We're starting with the, the first seven that are clear-cut, but we've got the other three or four that we need to take care of. Uh, we're, it's a priority for our work.
So are we consistent, you know, as far as who stops?
As far as?
Who stops? Whether the pedestrians stop or?
Well, the, 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 the traffic, when these signs are up and we're not going to enforce it for a couple of weeks just to get, let people get accustomed to it, the traffic has to stop. They have to stop. The trail traffic is still going to have a stop sign. They don't use it anyway. We don't expect them to use it. So the traffic is the car, vehicle traffic will stop.
And what's on the trail is the county. They make that determination whether those stop signs come or go. We're just the road part of it. So right now we're inconsistent. We have two streets where you have to stop.
That's what I'm asking you.
So we're going to, everything starting from Winter's Landing all the way over to Nixon will be consistent. The last four we're working on, we're going to get those consistent.
Okay.
We have extenuating circumstances on those. Once we get those taken care of, then everything will be consistent within the town of Oakland.
Okay.
But we're, we're, we're getting seven, we're adding seven, six or seven. And the last four we're going to do, they're, they're on the priority list, but we've got to get a couple of these other issues taken care of. There's construction down the Hole Island and there's going to be construction at Machete. And we've got the Bryley Farm stuff going on. And so we'll, we'll get those taken care of also. But we, we're starting, rather than waiting, we're going to go ahead and get these other ones done now. And we'll get, and we'll move, move forward with the other four that are left. County Line is the other one that's kind of interesting because that's private. So we'll have to work with, with uh, that, the Property Owner Association on that one. But um, the other three, the intention is to get those up to the same consistency. So it's definitely a priority.
Thank you.
With that said, it's not a consistent issue. These six or seven are consistent. They're ninety, ninety-degree intersections. These others are not. So they're, they're not going to be cookie cutter. And that's just answering your question. They won't, they won't look like these six or seven, but they will be addressed.
But we will address them for the safety conditions of the trail. So um, but we want to go ahead and get these done because these, these make sense to do right now and go ahead and get them done. And we'll get the other three done as soon as we can.
And how about right in front of town, all over there on South Street? Are we still keeping that? Worked small vehicles.
It's signed. It's, we have signage.
That'll stay the same, right?
So, okay. We're also all, like Mike said, all the pavement markings are very faded. Where the trail, even where the dirt roads come in and the paved trails there, the white lines are all very faded all the way down. So we're going to go through and get all those pavement markings uh, freshened up so that you can see the white crossing. And then um, we've talked to the, to the, to the uh, county about some of their pavement markings on the trail, coming back and doing some of those, but they don't have it in their budget for this year. But we have brought that up to them, to the county to, because there's some yellow lines and some bollards and stuff that they have that are all pretty faded. So we're going to take care of the ones that are in the roadways and get those freshened up also. So that'll be the signs and the pavement markings. And like I said, we'll go ahead and get these first seven done. And then we'll work on the other three to get those done. But they've been like this for many years. So we're just, we're trying to get these uh, up to speed.
Cool.
Incremental.
And now the, the traffic loads just force it, you know, with this many people that are on the trail.
That's the story of our life anymore, isn't it? Traffic. Don't care.
On the trail.
I don't care if it's bikes, cars, you know, planes, trains, or automobiles.
Railroad traffic on there, so, yeah.
Yeah. One would think. All right. Much pleasure, yes.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept, to approve resolution two zero two-two dash zero five.
Second.
That's insane.
I believe it'll be stop sign. In a box span.
All right, I read a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? Any questions? Any questions?
No hands.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And we have our stop signs. All right, uh, town manager reports.
All right, um, a couple of things. Um, first, hot off the presses, the Transportation Sales Tax Initiative uh, just passed the county commission four to three.
Four to three.
Four to three. Be on the ballot in November.
Three, wow.
I'm not surprised. It's, it's been a hot topic.
It's, it's, I was there for three hours this afternoon and it was interesting discussion for sure.
It was, four to three. That's not fun, yeah.
So, um.
Well, good. At least people have a chance to vote on it.
Yeah, there were, there was, they made a few tweaks to the ordinance, you know, at the eleventh hour. So that was part of the discussion. But it did pass four to three, so.
Well, that's good. That gives the, this is the, the choice.
And, and we had that resolution in support, so. Um, a couple of other things, uh, we, uh, Mike, Jay and I met with the Turnpike uh, consultants that are doing the P D and E study. And this is from the Turkey Lake Plaza to Highway fifty. And so this is, right now they're expanding, going from Highway fifty out to Lake County. They're expanding to eight lanes. This is the next phase, looking at a five-to-seven-year window where they're going to actually in parts of, I think, I, I don't know how the west is going. They're going to like sixteen lanes, uh, where the four twenty-nine and four oh eight. I mean, it's, it's massive what they're looking at. They're looking at, but that's, and, and it's becoming a priority. So this could get in their funding cycle in the next five, you know, in the next five-year plan that they come out with. Um, one of the, the key things was they wanted to add an interchange in Winter Garden. Um, one of the, the key things was, they wanted to add an interchange in Winter Garden, they took that out. Um, they were talking, one of the three scenarios in Oakland had a flyover. That came out, so they are going to do some changes to the interchange here in Oakland, but it will not involve a flyover. Over the current bridge, it's there, it would have been this big. So that, that came out. Um, they are going to have a public hearing on July nineteenth. Where you can come on virtually or go to the meeting, I believe it's gonna be in Okoye. Uh, when we get more information from them, I'll make sure all the commissioners get it and we'll put it out on Facebook. It's an important one to go to, but it is a massive project. I think they've got it broken up actually into three phases. Um, we saw just the high level, they still have to actually get, dig into the design. But this is that, that beginning of that process of getting, you know, through the environmental and, and the planning. Uh, the next step would be design, but it did very much sound like this was going to be a priority based on. Where they see the future of traffic, especially around that four twenty-nine, four oh eight situation. They're actually looking at five through lanes on each side, you know, north and south, that would take you. And then three outer lanes, I forget what they call them, where you would be getting off onto the four oh eight or onto the four twenty-nine. Um, I mean, it's, it's a massive project. Definitely, uh, a lot of it's within the current right of way that they already own, but they will be picking up some right of way along the corridor. You've gotta think about all the, the things that go with that, including stormwater and everything else, so. Um, it's, it's a massive project, but it did sound like that there was some urgency to it. And that they may get some funding attached to it, um, as they move through their priorities, so. Just put that out there, but it's gonna be important for that July meeting, because that will kinda just. Realize what this corridor is gonna look like, so they can move forward with the design. Um, I went to the Tri-County Meeting on Thursday and, and Commissioner McMullen um, got the hometown hero award. Got that there.
Adulation, Commissioner.
And uh, the last thing, I wanted to let Mike talk about the turnout, we got a couple of turnouts that were in the budget for this year, and so he's working on the, the next set of turnouts.
Almost one last thing, I did add a couple things to the list, so. Uh, the turnout that we're budgeting for this year, we're doing those two right now, and uh, that is Arrington at Oakland Avenue. And East Hall or West Hall at Tub Street, so you may have noticed the construction. Yep, pouring concrete tomorrow and we'll, we'll asphalt about thirty feet back from the road. Just make it, makes it safer for our greater operator, you know, we don't put him out there in traffic with the rotator, so it'll work out well. And then this is the third year that we've done that, so we're gonna continue until, till they're done. Um, quickly, the Turnpike Bridge, uh, the Oakland Avenue Bridge rather, uh, it's. If you've not been out there, you can see now they have all of the, whatever the term trusses, I call it. The trusses are now installed and they're starting to put their underpinning in that where they pour concrete, so that's coming along really good. Um, trees, this big tree, I think you all were notified, uh, this big tree's coming down on the twenty-eighth. Um, and then just today, we had another one, as hazardous as that one is, we had another one that was even more hazardous. That we found in Spear Park since that one, and uh, it came down today. It's, it was very dangerous and it was hanging right over the tennis court.
Yes.
And it was full of yellow jackets. I mean, it was a huge nest in it, so anyway, so public safety without. Um, and then um, if you haven't been over to the Sadler Park, we did get the fence installed. Between the commercial property and the residential, so take a look at it, we're letting it kinda, you know, letting the neighborhood kinda see it. And then we'll be removing the dirt pile.
Yay.
So anyway, progress.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, and your stop signs that we had so much discussion about, they will be up, uh, we've got it scheduled for the week of May second. So second through the fifth, sometime in there, they'll be up.
Very good.
No, no, we, well, we didn't plan on it, but.
Looks like it might be.
Well, wouldn't enforce it until a couple of weeks.
You do a soft launch, right? Like go out there and say.
Typically, what you do is you put the red flags to show it's a new sign. We would, if, we would do stops, but we'd do warnings for the first. And following week, we'd start a SUS, it's like. Usually for new um, trap control applied. Typically wanna put the new red flags on.
So, that came up, that came up. Since, since that came up, let me just say, we brought that up with our contractor, these are town owned streets, they're not. Yeah, right.
Well, we, we will be doing some, uh, some media campaigning with the new signs going up, so there'll be stuff on Facebook and, and whatever. These are side streets, they're not main thoroughfares, you know, it's basically neighborhood streets. So I think we'll be alright without the flag, we will be doing some.
Still a great move regarding.
The police presence should say, hey, the warning, Mayberry's down, you know, she.
Now the whole, the whole island four-way stop is coming, you know, that's part of a development agreement from years ago. That, that one will have the red flags because there's so many people without there, you know, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'll bring it to the table, Sal.
Uh, just a reminder that our first in-person meeting for MAC this year is uh. May fifth, Cinco de Mayo, Thursday, nine AM, so I'll be bringing updated information. Whatever goes on that day has been kinda.
Cinco de Mayo, you guys ain't gonna know nothing by the time you get up.
So um, April is uh, Jazz Appreciation Month, and so um. Saturday is actually International Jazz Day, so all over the world, Herbie Hancock. And different jazz professionals around the world, you'll start seeing a lot of jazz stuff on TV. And we having live jazz on Friday from three to six. And it's also a part of International Jazz Day, so Alicia and staff, they got that on the International Jazz Day. Um, calendar of events, and so people just Google, so you, we, we may have a good crowd out here on Friday, because people Google into jazz. It will Google uh, International Jazz Day events in your area, and our event is one of the listed events, and so. Uh, we're gonna have a nice day on Friday uh, from three to six, um, even though it's like actually International Jazz Day, but the last week or so. Jazz events, and so I think it kicks off in Australia, so whatever the time zone there is, so it'll probably start like two, like one o'clock in the morning, whatever their time zone. You'll see stuff on TV, on PBS all over, but just wanna land on that. Our event is one of the events in Central Florida that's been listed as annual official International Jazz Day event, so. Looking forward to um, a great event, and um, I know they got some great activities uh, for the community, not just music, yes, there's some, a lot of stuff going on. So I'm, I'm excited, I took a day off too, so. So that's Friday, three to six.
And you say we're gonna have Herbie Hancock here, is that?
Yes, it's um, it's been, I think last year, so this is eleven year, so Ja- Jazz Day ten was last year, so this is eleven. So you know, most of the Jazz Days last year were um, virtuals.
Right.
But, you know, there's been a lot of live jazz things going on all around the country, so.
Nice time to enjoy a glass of wine, a cigar.
Yeah, can't we smoke out there? I'm asking, you know, are there ordinances out there, we can smoke and drink out there? I'm just asking.
I don't know about drinking. It's outdoors, you know.
Would you can smoke, you can smoke a cigarette outside?
I, I don't think we have any ordinances otherwise.
Don't tell me that, okay.
It's just not in the building, so.
That's correct, not in the building.
I got my lawn chairs ready, I'll be out there just to sit down and partake, so I'm looking forward to it.
That's right.
Even though, even though it's still, it's not Friday, you know, we kinda just, that's cool. We should, that is, doing, the museum, they do some great stuff.
Wonderful, and it is doing uh, very well, the uh, the whole uh, the whole center itself, you know. You, you girls out there, just wonderful, whether you really are, so we do, we do appreciate you, for sure. Um, speaking of that, I have a question on the concession stand.
I've had two people come through lately, uh, and said they were gonna give me proposals and um, await.
We had talked about it individually, but you know, it's for the, for the other guys um, to hear. If we don't get anything soon, maybe we talk about something going simple and it, and we get something running ourselves. Just to get something looked at, so that people are gonna go, well, that is a viable option, so. Maybe it's something we all consider, if we, if we're not getting anything, because it's been a long time now, and I know COVID's kept this down and stuff like that too, but. Maybe if there's something in there that we can do reasonably inexpensive to have people looking at it and say, hey, that's a good idea. And then advertise something, because I know we said we would help refinish and stuff, but.
Yeah, well, i- it's still a shell, so it would still need to be built out, no matter what we, we do. I was hoping to get somebody that would give us, best way to build it out, that would be conducive to somebody, so if, if we don't get somebody, we'll have to figure out what.
Right.
How we wanna build that out, because it needs a counter and some other.
And if we wanna go in and look at it at one point, I mean, that's what I did for thirty years with Pepsi, is build through all the concession stands at Universal and T-World and Disney, all that, so.
Yeah.
But it is, now I am old and I forget a lot, but you know, I don't remember, so.
The sooner the better, I mean, I'm thinking about it, the event this Friday.
Yeah.
How nice it would be to have, you know.
Something in there, so um, like I said, just something.
I, I thought I had a really good one here the last couple of weeks, and I haven't heard back from it.
But you know, we talk about it a lot, um, and it's not from lack of trying, that's for darn sure. But if something doesn't come soon, maybe we do something proactively, but that way, I just wanna make sure that it's out there for everyone else to kinda be thinking about, so.
I say let the school run a student store.
They can throw in a hot dog.
Cub scalpel, or it's got something.
You know, something, so it's not, you know, just dead space and, and track some of them when you have events and stuff too, and you know, that isn't a bad idea. Some sort of, something for the school fundraiser, if you think about that, or did I tell you that earlier or something?
Go ahead and build it out ourselves, it would probably attract someone who can't think beyond building it, it's, it's already ready go spot. I think about that ice cream van that rides around town, we always buy, we always stop to have about, I don't know, fifteen kids at my house. Ready to buy something from them. They don't have to waste gas riding around that van.
Right.
And that, you know.
Thousand people a year.
Be honest with you, a little ice cream, a- anyone that has a mobile location that stays local these days. In a way of saving gas, that might be an attraction for something, so.
Ice cream van, uh, you know, it's a lot of gas driving around.
Kids aren't normal here, but I buy ice cream from Chicago lot.
Anyway.
Pretend you have kids.
As I, I, I tell them, I'm bringing them in, give me six of these ice cream. So that's all I have, so.
Alright, Laura Hart, I'm absolutely satisfied, let's adjourn, it is now eight thirty-four PM.
Thank you much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you.
Bye-bye.